I'd call the order, the June twenty-sixth meeting of the five city council with the clerk please go.
Weavers.
Here.
Council members Weaver.
Here.
Um, here.
Here.
I'm here.
Here.
Very good. Would you all rise and join us in pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second approve the agenda. Further discussion seeing one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those aye, the agenda is approved. Next, we have assistance presentation. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. And while Pete checks to see if there's anyone online, anyone in the chamber can vote podium and identify yourself and address this on an issue that is not on the agenda.
For those who are participating online, you can get our attention in the council chamber by using the raise hand function on your Zoom screen. If you look at the bottom of that screen, you can touch, hit the react button and then you'll be able to select raise hand.
While Pete does that, I'll just remind everyone that we support the pillars of character counts and follow those in all of our endeavors.
I do not see any hands going up there.
Very good. We'll move on to our presentations and Richard, you're going to tell us about the festival.
Thank you. Well, we are just three short weeks away from this year's installment of the Clyde Festival. So things will be a little bit different here. I think we might have a few slides. If not, I can talk my way through it. But things are going to be a little bit different this year because the green belt landing site is not available for our normal location for Clyde Festival. So what we're having to do is do some modifications and how the festival operates in terms of using space and where we go and kind of how we operate overall in general. Probably the first big thing that I'm going to notice is, there we go. Point or me to retreat. I'm sorry. The other button is not. Hold it. Okay. Hey. All right, perfect. So the first big thing you're going to notice is the giant wire slide. We're going to post, we're proposing to postpone that for this year. Couple of different things, reasons for that is, one, the amount of mess and mud that that kind of makes up on the site. Having the rest of the festival on the site, we just really felt like it maybe not the best to have that there. Then also just being very cognizant of the water restrictions that were under with the lawn watering ban. We just felt using that much water for that maybe didn't make the most sense, even though we have a ton of rain right now. And three weeks from now, we don't know if that lawn watering ban is going to still be in effect. We just thought between those two things, it might be best just to hold off for this year. And we've already talked to the fire department. They're ready to come back for twenty twenty-six, better, bigger and better than ever. We are moving the Clyde Running Festival to Campbell Park.
Two questions on that. One is, have we relayed that out to the public communications? That's a very popular event.
Yeah, no, we haven't yet until we want to talk to the council here first tonight and then that will start to go out with the rest of our communications over the next two, three weeks.
And the second on your site map, you do show a slip and slide, so you just delete that moving forward to the decision?
Yep, absolutely. Yep, yeah, that, well, it was kind of hard to make that map change right away before we talked to the council, but after that, we'll get that updated and get that up to public.
I saw the perception of that, visual of that, especially when all of it's being dumped and not recirculated, just was not a good place for asking folks to restrict water use.
I can tell you that's how it gets slipped out because I've gotten emails and text messages and other stuff.
No, I think the fire department did post something under, so I think I got it yesterday or the day before.
Or the firefighters association.
They did, yeah, the firefighter association, so.
Yeah. The running festival, we're moving that to Campbell Park just because things are so tight within the parking lot with everything that's going on there with construction, the pool, those things like that. We've also talked to our friends at the Lions Club. They're going to hold up and do the pancake breakfast this year as well for the same reason, just doesn't work as well up there at that site, but they'll be back next year. We're going to have to bring lots of portable power and lighting typically more than we need to, but we've been able to find sponsors to help with that. Also kind of cut out the helicopter landing that we typically do. We're going to move the kids up for art that is typically over either at the special events building or in city hall. Since both those are kind of out of commission, we're going to move those over to the Harbach Center. And then we're moving Bingo over to Walnut Ridge. So we're trying to get as many of the activities we can in this kind of disruptive year here, but like you said, there's a few that are changed and some that we won't be able to do. So here's a proposed event map. So basically what we're going to be is just up the hill from the aquatic center there. We're going to use part of Campus Drive east of one hundred and fourteenth street over to the entrance to that gravel area that people park and as a, for the overflow, the aquatic center there to the north of campus. The stage is going to be just south of campus, receiving, kind of working its way up that hill, kind of creating almost an amphitheater-like effect. We're still have a lot of the other things, the bounce houses, the food trucks, all sorts of things and activities. We've got our sponsors as well as our beverage tent, as well as the vendors that want to show up as well.
You talk about parking a little bit, Richard.
Yeah, so the aquatic center parking will still be available, typically how it is, as well as this gravel area just to the north of campus. People will just have to come from south of the Mercy Hospital all the way around to get to that point. And then we'll work with the park producers and those as well to make sure that we have access to their parking lot.
One fourteenth street will be open, correct?
Correct. It will be open as far as I know at this point.
No parking at Mercy, though. Is that accurate?
I believe that's the case, yes. It doesn't always stop people, but we don't have an agreement or anything like that.
You can utilize, yeah, with park producers, national park producers, typically they'll allow parking there as long as we make prior confirmation with that.
Yep, I think we've already reached out to them and we're good to go there, but we'll do one more confirmation during Friday, Friday event. And then one of the things we'll also be doing again this year, we'll have shuttle golf cart shells. We'll just do it the opposite way. Instead of bringing people from above down below, we'll bring them from down below up above. So just a little cut for service thing to make sure people can get to the festival pretty easily. So here's our general schedule. On Friday night, it's the goats and the fountain houses, food and beverage. The aquatic center stays open a little bit later and then live music is from five thirty to eleven. And then we had a fireworks teaser. I believe we're going to do that again about ten o'clock like we did last year. I think there was a pretty good reception of that having a little bit earlier. So if people had kids, they could do that and then go home if they wanted. And then Saturday, we had the running festival. We have touch and rock in our community art. We had the cardboard road boat regatta at Aquatic Center, bingo, and a lot of the same things again with the music, the food trucks, the beverages, and then the goats and the bounce houses. And then finally, the thunder over fly fireworks.
Richard, can you go back to the site map?
Yeah.
So typically with respect to parking and how people walk to the festival, they're going east and there's really no, no traffic that they're having to deal with. Here, they're going to be coming from the north to south. Is there any thoughts about having to navigate traffic, people coming in and out of that parking lot, coming up and down one hundred and fourteenth street? You know what I mean?
You're saying to get, to go all the way down and then back around?
The site map, you're, there's certainly people that cross in one hundred and fourteenth street. I mean, we do that anyways, I guess, to get to the festival, but I don't know. I'm just thinking out loud, but normally you're just going east over to the area and there's no traffic to really have to navigate here. There might be some traffic going through that parking lot and what have you. I don't know. Have you put any thought in that or is that a concern?
Not a big concern, but we'll continue to work with the police department. They've been, they're great help and helping us. There's areas where we need to have police to kind of let traffic in or out or people cross, or I know at times we put temporary stop signs in to allow people to cross one hundred and fourteenth street there at the entrance to Aquatic Center. So we'll, we'll continue to evaluate that and work with.
Want to think about the traffic patterns a little bit.
Yeah. No, absolutely.
Richard, in recent years, we've seen a real uptick in people riding their bikes to the festival, pushing strollers, things that age it. We put those bike racks right by Campbell Park. However, that's because of the distance. Have we, we thought about, is it closer to where the festival areas?
Yeah, so we'll have some temporary bike parking areas that we'll bring up there and kind of fence off so people can park their bike if they want. Yeah, so it's just kind of one of those temporary things that we want to do to make sure that we can get people up there as much as possible. And like everyone said, the street back open, that allows the connection to the trail along the sidewalk to get up to the side as well. All right, here's our music lineup for this year. So Friday night, we have Recoil Rocks and then Gimmick as our main event on Friday night. Then on Saturday, for the opener, we have Bad Friends and Toaster for the, the main event on Saturday night. So I think we've, we've got some good bands and I think they'll draw a good crowd and we're excited. I believe this might be the first time all four of them have been here. Maybe you could tell me, Eric, I don't know if some of them have been.
Toaster's been here before. Gimmick has been a long time.
Yeah, so neither of them, since I've been.
At least ten years.
Yeah, so this, I think it'll be a good crowd to get people back that haven't seen these bands before. So fundraising update. So we're a little bit behind this year where we have been in the past. Couple of different things in that. We typically get a grant from Hope County, the board supervisors as part of this. We did not get that this year. Actually, there was an article in the paper here earlier this week. They've had three times the amount of requests that they've had over last year, and so we were not one of the grants that they chose to get for this. Also, our sponsor, the main sponsor for this Lincoln Savings Bank, they went from a seventy-five hundred dollar down to a twenty-five hundred dollar sponsorship. And then the other big one is we already had a sponsor for the slip and slide, but due to that not having, that sponsor didn't want to continue forward. So they'll be back next year, but a couple of things like that. So we're, we're still going out there, still hitting the street, trying to find more sponsorship opportunities. So if you know of any organizations or businesses that are interested in sponsoring the event, point them our way or we'd have to reach out to them. So we're just going to keep hitting the street over the next three weeks here and see if we can get some of that gap closed a little bit. Just a quick overview of our major expenses here. The biggest one is fireworks. We have a new vendor this year, J and M Displays. Their contract will be on your agenda next, next week. We did this a little bit different. We told them the type of show that we wanted and then how much we wanted to spend and we made each other better that way to give us the best show. So we think we got a, a good show that's going to be for the community this year and excited to see what they do.
You guys did like an RFQ.
Yes, yeah, we put out, we had, I believe we had three pre-submissions from three different vendors. The one that we typically had, just this team and another team. And we've had some really good, really good stuff. So we're excited to see what they do for us this year.
What's your timeline of that fireworks, Richard, as far as the length of the show? I know we're doing a three to four, three to five minute.
Yeah.
The teaser show on Friday.
I think it's four to six minutes on Friday and I think we're looking at seven to twelve on, on Saturday night.
Perfect, just no twenty-minute.
Yes, exactly. That, we got a lot of our bang for our buck that year. We did. I think we got, I think we got like a ten-minute Friday show and almost a twenty-five-minute Saturday show. It was, it was really long.
Twelve isn't, full, twelve right in there, give or take a minute either ways, often times.
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we said on there too, is like the amount of time, the certain amount of fireworks we wanted and a maximum budget. And so it's really kind of how we've been doing the playground stuff. Asked them to bid against each other on that to give us the best show for that price. So we're excited to see what they come up with. And then just the other typical thing is the, the stage sound and banners, light music, beverages and ice. One of the things we also do, work with the chamber, they do a great job in helping us get sponsorships for this. And as part of that, they have agreement where they get fifteen percent of that and then just give you a feel for what's like the last couple of years. We've done very well in twenty-three and twenty-four. Obviously, weather helps drive attendance and beverage sales, you know, so if we get a great eighty to eighty-five degree weekend, we're going to do really well. But if it's ninety-five and like it was earlier in the week, we're going to struggle with attendance. So a lot of that just is dependent on the weather and what we get, but we're excited to have everyone out here in just over three weeks. Have you, any questions? Yeah.
The tricky marketing efforts. Have you reached out to Bankers Trust to get publicity? Because we do have a fifty-fifty sponsorship with that sign out there and that's free advertising for us. Have we reached out to them? I know in the past, it's been kind of a, a challenge to do that.
Good question, repeat.
When are we going to see Clyde Festival on that?
Another dimension to this challenge, the partners at Bankers Trust recently changed that sign technology without notifying the city. So we are now in conversation with them about how we will get everybody back to good and consistent with the agreement. But yes, once we are there, assuming that they're up and running, their tech now with this, that, that, it's not operational right now. It's not displaying any images, at least when I went to drive past this morning, I wasn't. I think that, am I correct on that, Amanda? They're still not operational with that sign?
I have not received a response back quite yet, but we're working through figuring all that out. Yeah, so.
It was not operational on the way here tonight, but sure we can actually utilize that, especially when we've got that, you know, you should share agreement with them.
Yeah, we're with you on that. We want to get there every year. It's just, it's been a challenge each year.
All right, anything else for Richard?
All right, we'll see you in three weeks.
Next up, we have a consent.
Move approvals.
Second.
Motion second on consent for discussion. Being done with the council, please vote. And little clerk, please post it. And that passed the by vote of five. Next up is public hearing on our zoning ordinance amendment. Did we publish the appropriate public notes?
Public notice was published in the Des Moines Register on June ninth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Amanda.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight we have the public hearing and first consideration of the zoning ordinance amendment to allow more accessory dwelling units. You all had prioritized creation of an ADU program during your strategic planning process. The staff was working on that. However, the state legislation that was passed did require us to make some changes, but we think we are largely ending up very similar to what we would have recommended. So you may recall the last time we started with a slide called what is an accessory dwelling unit? And it was very high level. This time it is what we have written into the ordinance. So it is going to be an additional dwelling unit that is subordinate to the principal dwelling. That was important to us. That was one of the things that we had understood, that we wanted to make sure that they're truly accessory to the primary houses. The accessory dwelling unit must include sleeping, sanitation, and permanent cooking provisions in order to be a dwelling unit. They have to have those minimum standards. They also are going to have to provide an expectation of privacy, which means they don't have direct and free access between the ADU and the primary dwelling. For detached, that's pretty straightforward. It's detached. It doesn't have immediate access. But for attached dwelling units, there are accessory dwelling units, that could be provided in a variety of ways. You could have a solid wall, kind of like with like a duplex. Not that it is the same as a duplex, just the wall. Or there would be some opportunity to have some connections between that would be behind certain types of door setups that are not just your typical interior door. So the other things, of course.
Real quick, coming back to that, you know, one of the main reasons with, with ADUs is ability to house perhaps a, an aging parent, somebody of that nature, grandparents of that nature and, you know, be able to have that access. I think it's important to be able to have the interaction, certainly understand the provision of this ordinance where, and we want to have some type of a door, what have you, but I think it's critical that we have that ability to, to go back and forth through that, especially from a caregiver aspect.
Um, so that is going to come up in two slides, but largely.
Go ahead. In the experiment.
Great idea, Mike.
But for that kind of situation, those are likely going to fall under just actually being considered an addition to the home. So these are just what we're making for the, strictly it's an ADU and it has to comply with all the ADU standards. So also in an effort to ensure that they do stay truly accessory to the principal dwelling is ADUs will not be allowed to have a separate address. They will use the same metered utility service from the water. And then in the case primarily for an attached unit, the exterior door would not be oriented toward the front yard. So that door would be off the side or the rear of the house or otherwise through potentially like a shared entry corridor vestibule.
Detached.
Well, for detached, they will have to be in the rear yard.
Like an orient, be oriented.
Typically, yes. So the language in there is like oriented and readily visible from that front yard. So this is staff's attempt to keep those where it's not going to appear when people add these that they have just converted a single-family house to a duplex. It's truly intended to be accessory and to serve your family or friends or, you know, that's, that's really the intent behind the ADU versus widely creating a bunch of potential rental type units for single-family homes.
So Amanda, just so I'm clear, all of these bullet points, are, are these all covered within the legislation or are these specific?
These are, these are specific to us.
So within the legislation, you could have a separate meter where the ADU is at.
Yeah, so the, the state requirement is actually written the inverse of ours, that you can't require someone to have a separate metered service. And we've worked through our utility policies and conferred with Public Works and the building division. And we've determined that keeping that one service is what is most appropriate on a single-family type residence. So we would use that same, same standard here. Now that could potentially have like a functionally deduct meter or sub-meter that would separate out utility once it's passed, but it would come from the same metered service at the point of the main.
So especially if you've got someone that's looking at a rental capacity, somebody of that nature, and they wanted to carve out that separate cost right there.
Yes.
They could use a sub-meter that would still accomplish that goal.
Yes, but they would still just receive the bill from the city that they would have to then divvy up on their own.
To that meter point, you're, you're just speaking of water, correct? And electric?
Yep, the electric and gas would be managed by the private utility, so we don't have any say over that. And also some building code requirements that if there are more specific questions, I'll make Ryan come up and answer those ones.
Yeah, probably about the.
The windows. We thought since these are smaller units, they could just have smaller proportions, so, yeah. So then to set.
Ryan has his way, it's going to be a giant greenhouse.
Exactly. Make sure they're west facing so everyone can have their very healthy house plans, but. So then to compare that against what is a duplex? Because that is a bit hard to just understand inherently here. So the duplex is two units that are attached. They include the same provisions that an ADU would. There are no openings between the units. They do have a separate address. Those ones do have separate metered utility service. And then typically your two exterior doors are going to be on the same facade. That's not a requirement of a duplex, but that is generally how they end up being constructed. So if we had a corner lot or something, you might see one on a side, one on front, but they, they would be allowed to have two exterior doors on the front. And then what is a residential addition? So this is where staff believes most of our requests for accessory dwelling units or mother-in-law suites, those types are truly going to fall under the residential addition category. The situation we found that staff struggled with was we have a lot of homes that have already made additional improvements. They might already have two kitchens. They might already have, you know, the bar in the basement that qualifies as a kitchen, even though it's not really used that way. And frequently they would have a bedroom and a bathroom in their basement, as many people that have a finished basement do, or second story, you know, exterior kitchen, it's outside for your parties. And as a community and city, we wanted people to be able to still have those nice amenities and improvements that they make to their house. One, it is their home and that's something that they want if they're trying to build it, but also it doesn't increase in the value of the properties, which is important consideration for the city. So if you are just adding livable space to an existing dwelling, that is either by constructing new area that's not currently in the house or if you are finishing an unfinished space like an attic or a basement, those are all considered additions with the building code. It may include sleeping, sanitation, and permanent cooking provisions up to a maximum of two permanent cooking provision areas interior to one dwelling unit. So if you have your main kitchen on your main level and you have a second kitchen in your basement and you want to make a little suite down there for your kid that's returning from college for the summer, you can do that. That's just an addition to your house. You're already using it that way. If you're finishing it out for that, that second kitchen or bar area that you might have in your basement will not automatically make you an accessory dwelling unit. As long as you have that direct and free access, which we have defined here as being connected to the principal dwelling with a minimum thirty-six inch opening that has habitable space on both sides. So it can't just be into like a hallway. But if you go from like a bedroom to a living room, well, shouldn't say it can't be on a hallway. It wouldn't be on like a common corridor where they're more like an apartment building, that wouldn't be a habitable space in the corridor. But if you're going into like your living room or something, that is a habitable space. In those situations, that's just an addition to your home. As long as you're maxed out at the two permanent cooking provision kitchen areas. So we thought that that would keep people largely able to have their family members that they want to move in or take care of. They'll still be able to do that and it won't get us in a bind with other people who are just trying to put improvements in their house because they enjoy those. Oh no, it's going to do this again. Okay. Okay. For the ADU regulations, the size is set by the state. That is a one thousand square foot or fifty percent of the principal dwelling, whichever is larger of those two. The occupant load for accessory dwelling units will be calculated just the same as any other dwelling unit. So how many people can be in that unit? It's going to be the same standard as it is for any of our houses. It's built, it's based on the square footages and types and layouts of individual rooms. So like bedrooms of a certain square footage can accommodate one, two, or three people. You can have one like a bonus sleeping area, like a living room or something counts for one occupant. So it'll be the same standard that we apply to all of our dwelling units. The setbacks would be the same as what is required for the principal dwelling, except that any ADU that otherwise meets all of the existing requirements for an accessory building, building would be able to be built to the accessory building zoning standards, not building code provisions, but to the zoning standards. So what that means is if you're less than six hundred square feet, you can be at a maximum height of fifteen feet. You could be up to five feet from the side and rear property lines. It is still only in the rear yard. And at that six hundred square feet, that's when our accessory buildings today have to meet the same setbacks as the principal house. We felt that that was an appropriate standard for allowing more flexibility for smaller ADUs that are more likely to truly be serving one or two people, more likely to be a family member because they're not going to be as easily marketable as a rental unit that wouldn't have some of those considerations, just because the size is going to be quite a bit smaller. And then the architectural standards, it's the same standards that apply to a principal dwelling. That is the state requirement. But it is not the same standards that are on the principal dwelling on the same lot. So for our accessory buildings, what you're used to seeing is we require them to basically match the existing house or be complementary to it. So if you have horizontal siding, we want to see kind of replicated horizontal siding on your accessory building. Your roof style and pitch, we like to see those replicated on your accessory building. We are not allowed to require that to match the lot or the house that's on that same property under the state requirement. Now for our smaller ADUs that are otherwise needing all the accessory building requirements, that would be the expectation, since those are largely the bonus ADUs. If the state ordinance wouldn't have allowed those necessarily under the language that's written there, because we're only required to allow accessory dwelling units in the same setbacks as the principal dwelling. So by giving those kind of other ones, we are expecting to see people complying with those standards if they want to take advantage of the reduced setbacks.
The expectation also to meet all HOA requirements as well, then? How does that, how does that?
Yes, so the private agreements and covenants are still honored after the state code. So some of that will be down to how the HOAs enforce that. And staff does now when we are aware of covenants, we do try to ensure that we are not granting any permits and violation of those. There are quite a few of our covenants that say something along the lines of a lot may only be used for a dwelling unit or residence purposes only. So I think it'll vary to some extent on how those are interpreted by the HOAs and you may see some of those HOAs actually go in and change their covenants in response to the state law change, either to be less or more restrictive.
I'm thinking a thousand square feet sounds pretty big. I'm so I'm wondering where that number came from.
That is the state. We are not able to change that.
That's surprising to me.
Yes.
That's pretty big.
Yes, um, those are pretty large, um, same size as the first house I owned, so. Um, it's the full house, uh, certainly, so um. That is one of the reasons that we wanted to look at some of the other flexibility of for the smaller units. We think most people will prefer the smaller unit based on where it could be located on the property. Um, and so we think that that will be more likely to have smaller units constructed um, with these standards and allowing it to match the accessory building.
Flexibility do we have to reduce that size? Cause Susan and I agree with you, a thousand square feet is pretty good size, especially if they're looking for, you know, just four, five, six hundred square feet for just a bedroom, something of that nature. How much flexibility do we have with that?
Uh, we cannot require it to be reduced beyond that.
Right.
Um, we uh, have included a definition to clearly define what is livable space in our ordinance. So we are not including garages, unfinished basements, um. Usually basically the same standard you see come across in our PUD ordinances, we've largely replicated just into the zoning standards. Um, so that helps.
Center of the principal dwelling, but you're not counting, you're only counting main level square footage up, right? You're not counting.
We are, finished basement would count. Um, what we are proposing is essentially the same that matches your assessment from the county livable space. Yes, there are some specific standards in there um, from the Iowa assessor assessment guide. Uh, for when finished attic space counts and when a finished basement space counts. Um, and so it has to have finished walls, floors, and ceilings in order to be counted towards um, that livable space. So we tried to match that, um, which we can change that definition if
For any appraisal. I mean assessments typically, it's gonna be main level square footage of not finished base, but that's, that's, that square footage is calculated differently. Including the price per square foot. It's gonna be calculated differently, so in my opinion, we should not be using any square footage that's not above grade square footage. The other question I have is, um, you know, if we have like a split foyer, for example, that's eight hundred and fifty square feet. Which we have those, can we then do an ADU that's a thousand square feet at that's
Yes.
Bigger than the principal home?
Yes. Um, and what we're, what staff has largely found as we've looked at uh, the map, there wasn't a way to get to um, an exact number of who would qualify. We just have too many properties with unique sizes, shapes. Um, but most of our lots are not going to be able to accommodate an additional thousand square feet within their required building setbacks. Um, a lot of them are pretty maxed out, especially on the west side. People have built larger homes. The lots tend to be larger, but the homes are also larger. So a lot of those are built side setback to side setback. Front yard, and then we have some that are to the building setback line. Or within just a few feet of that required area where you just would not physically be able to fit a thousand square feet. And then, um, of course, there is also going to be separation requirements, um, based on building code that would.
So I was just gonna ask, so how 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 close can the ADU be to like the deck? Is there, are there requirements?
The deck, is it ten feet from a deck?
It would be, um, yes, ten feet from a deck.
Yes, it'd be ten feet.
Deck that's attached to the house.
Right. What's the setback from the edge of the property to the neighbor's property?
Um, for the actual ADU that is within the building setbacks that are required for the house. Most of our areas, it's gonna be a seven foot side setback and a thirty-five foot rear setback. So really no difference than where you could um, build the home.
I just wanted to make sure that we're putting a point on it so everybody is fully aware. It is the
Yeah.
Larger
Yeah.
Of the two.
So if you had a four thousand square foot house, you could build a two thousand square foot accessory dwelling unit. Looking at the likelihood of that. It's
All the more reason why we shouldn't be counting below grade square footage.
And I just, like I said, it isn't a standard that we can modify. The basement, I think we do have flexibility on. Um, it's probably not likely to happen. But they're absolutely properties in the city of Clive that will be able to take advantage of something larger than one thousand square. Just so we have a level understanding of that possibility.
And so a lot of that area is around, um, in our district one. Eighty-sixth street neighborhoods, that seventy-fifth, seventy-eighth street area with the deep lots. Those deeper lots are where you're really gonna find people are able to um, fit that full-size accessory dwelling unit onto the property. And then of course, some of our more estate lots that are remaining have a lot of land with them. They would be able to put um, the one ADU onto that property as well, um, without having to do any sort of subdivision or anything like that.
Oh, question. Like yard space, right? Is there a minimum requirement we have to give that? You know, we talk about permeable surfaces.
Yes, so um, under the state one, that's required, it's allowed if it's within the same setbacks as your house. We are not allowed to count that unit toward yard coverage. Um, and so the way our calculation of the lot coverage works is for rear yards, you're typically allowed to cover fifty percent. Side and front yard, we would allow you to cover thirty percent. Um, with improvements, not necessarily buildings. We don't allow additional buildings in the front yard. Um, and so with that, uh, those smaller accessory buildings, we believe we could count as yard coverage because that does apply to our accessory buildings and is part of the zoning requirements. Um, but those larger ones would not count to that. Um, that is similar to how additions to single-family houses are treated now because it's part of the principal building. Uh, those additions also then do not count towards yard coverage. Because they're taking place within those allowed setbacks.
Ted, I just had a question, uh, it's on to the microphone. So if somebody wanted to put a basement under an ADU, would it be assumed to be reasonable that um, the square footage of the basement could be tied back to the finished basement of the house? Shouldn't be.
It should be separate.
How do you, how do you, in the ADU, ADU, how do you define what would be allowed for finished basement space?
That's a great question. I I I never even thought about a basement on an ADU, to be honest. I mean, typically, we, again, basement square footage is just calculated separately in Iowa and main level square footage is what you calculate. When, anytime you look at a price per square foot, that's what it's based on.
Okay.
Main level enough, basement square footage, so I wouldn't think that that would count towards this. But that, that'd just be my opinion. I don't know what the legislation says.
Cause here in Iowa with the forty-two inch footings, they gotta dig halfway to a full basement. So I can see a lot of folks just saying, let's go another four feet and just put a basement under it, you know? We wanna have some parameters, obviously.
I would guess that wouldn't count towards this one thousand square feet. I I wouldn't.
Okay.
If I were calculating it.
Okay.
So um, we'll bring back some, we'll recheck what the assessor manual says to make sure that we're understanding that correctly. Um, and we'll bring back that option. But just so it's clear, if we say the the basement space of the principal dwelling does not count toward the area. That also means if there's a basement for an accessory dwelling unit, it will not count toward the area. So you may have a six hundred square foot above grade ADU that has six hundred or more square feet below grade, that it then could be a finished basement space.
Which I guess, just thinking out loud, I mean, that would seem to be acceptable because you're, you're not really intruding on anyone else at that point, right? You're not affecting anybody's view or it's it's all below grade. Nobody can see that. So if, if the homeowner wants that and wants to pay for it and the builder's willing to do it, then I think that's great.
That's, that's reasonable and it's nice until you start talking about like parking, you know, you start adding that.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a question I have.
Occupants and now you got parking that we're not able to regulate. So I mean, it's, it's a wild mess.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That we gotta really think deep on.
Right, right.
Yes, and to answer the parking question, we are not allowed to require additional parking beyond what is required for the principal dwelling to accommodate an ADU regardless of the size of the ADU that is constructed. And of course, accessory buildings do not have a parking requirement, so there would be no additional language in the code that we could fall back on for that. Um, and then uh, we did specify in there that section eleven eleven flood control does apply. So if it's a detached ADU being built in the floodplain, it has to be that minimum one foot above the base flood elevation. All the same standards for utility floodproofing and everything that would apply to any other dwelling. Um, because those are first and foremost for safety. Those are life safety provisions. Um, so that is still going to be applicable. Um, if it's an addition, a or an attached ADU on the home. It'll fall under the same standards that are used for uh, substantial improvements and when those different requirements kick in.
I do have one. I don't know if I'm gonna ask this, right? So bear with me, but I know that we have, like, wh- when we change our zoning ordinances, that will oftentimes grandfather in properties. But then if you do an improvement over twenty-five percent or whatever the percentage is. Now you have to bring the rest of the home up to whatever the new zoning change is. Does this have any impact on that with those grandfathered properties because they do this? Now have to bring the principal home up to the new zoning?
So for the most part, the actual houses for the zoning standards, we don't have a lot that are um, not conforming today. There are some, um, but I just wanna make sure that it's clear that section is not necessarily applying to um, building code updates. Um, those kick in separately and I could have Ryan speak to those if you guys want more explanation.
Point attached versus detached too, right? Like if I'm doing Boy, I'm really impacting that principal resident. Then trigger in new zoning.
So typically, um, you are not allowed to do anything that would make your non-conformity worse. But you would be allowed to make other improvements to your property as long as those improvements are in compliance when it applies to the zoning standards. Um, but I'm gonna make sure that that is how this would be viewed when we come back um, for our July ten meeting. I'll have uh, absolute clarity on how we're considering those. And just, that's a great question.
Just a point of clarification there. Um, obviously at this moment there should not be any auxiliary dwelling units in the city. So if you have one illegally. That is not grandfathered, if that's your question.
That's not my question.
Okay.
You're saying if the house is built at a three-foot property line setback. Now are we gonna say you have to fix that?
Yeah, we've grandfathered them in for whatever reason, not because of an ADU, but because because the zoning changed, but they didn't have to make the changes to their home, so they've been grandfathered in. But if they do a certain level of improvement, now they've gotta meet the new zoning requirements. You know, does the ADU trigger that?
It don't.
No.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have any situation with that because it would be, we would not permit the ADU to increase the non-conformity. Um, so it's not a change that's gonna be directly related to that. Um, those really kick in more with damage to a home. So if your home is substantially damaged beyond those standards that are set out in the ordinance and you were going to rebuild or have to significantly um, reconstruct the house. That's when those, you have to build it to the current setback requirements really kick in. Um, so I don't think that there's anything with that. Doug seems to agree, so that's probably good, but we will chat and make sure. Um, before we are through this process, that we know for sure exactly how that'll apply.
And and just to also I'm guessing some of that reference is with respect to some of the conversations we previously had in Indian Hills.
Yes, with the flooding and some of those.
Which is a very specific use case. So yes, if I have a house in Indian Hills and the base flood elevation has now gone up regulatory. And my, my first floor is no longer above that. And now I wanna attach an ADU. I need to keep the value of that improvement, the value of that addition or the ADU. It not more than forty-nine percent of the value of the house. Because once you go over fifty, it is now a substantial improvement. And the entire structure has to be to the current standard. That's a floodplain development federal standard. Um, and it would be applicable in the floodplain. But all the rest of the houses in terms of that question of will it trigger other things, the answer is no.
Doug, would it have any impact on the flood insurance ratings? Um, this marks an ADU would.
It could.
It's possible, but I don't think it is likely because the flood insurance is not gonna differentiate the primary dwelling from the ADU. They're simply gonna say, what is the lowest floor? What is the rating? And then correlate that to the price of insurance. So you adding an addition onto the house isn't going to materially change that unless you decide, hey, I I have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of insurance, but I put the addition on and I, I, I need to bump it up to three hundred thousand. You know, you're gonna pay a premium, you know, increased cost there, but simply adding the ADU on should not materially change the flood insurance.
And that is, cause any new detached ADU would be built in conformance with the standards. And then those additions, if it's an attached ADU, would it minimum have to be at the same finished elevation as the existing principal dwelling? So it's not getting any worse on the actuarial scales. These are great questions. Keep them coming. Any more?
Any more question?
Move to close public hearing.
Before we close the public hearing, is there anyone online or anyone in the chambers who wishes to address us on the ADU wish? I think no one come forward and no one online, or the council please votes. And we'll quickly post that. And public hearing is closed by a vote of five to two.
With the ordinance number one-one-six-four have been considered by the CASP, we voted on for prior passage prior to its final adoption.
Second. Motion second for the first reading, further discussion. Seeing none with council please vote. And with clerk's name's post staff. Again, does anybody disagree?
That passes by a vote of five zero.
Um, just one quick parting thought. Staff is working on an accessory dwelling units back that we are hoping to have complete by the July ten meetings. That will be available for the public once the ordinance is approved. If you do have any great questions or curiosities, please send them on to staff. Um, cause if you have the question, other people probably will too. And if we haven't included it, we'd like to get it included so people know what they can do.
Once we get that finalized, Steve, from a communication standpoint out to the citizens, what's our, what's our plan then? Cause this could affect a lot of people.
It's not something that we've discussed at length yet. Um, need to get sort of these things done in the right, right sequence. We would have all of the tools in the box right now that we could use. But it would be interesting to see if this is a topic that starts to come up with some developers or home builders. Where we might be able to go and speak directly to them, yet they're gonna be likely uh, confused until they're had a chance to go through this the same way you all as well. So that's a good call out.
And we have maintained a list of any residents that have inquired about being able to construct an ADU over the last couple of years. Um, we've been in communication with them, so they know about the process. Um, we have met with one developer um, that may come forward with some proposals, so. Thank you.
If you have million dollars in insurance, tell us.
Yes, please. Uh, this is the time of year where we renew our property and liability insurance. I've got Megan with ICAP here with me for any technical questions, but um, we put together a rather extensive memo outlining our history, um, what we've done to keep our costs low. Um, what has been driving prices up. Um, as you can see there, over the last five years, our, our rate has gone up a hundred and fifty-one percent. over the last five years, our our rate has gone up one hundred and fifty-one percent. Um, with the, an apparent increase this year of three point eight percent. But when you compare apples to apples, ICAP is now including cyber liability coverage, which was previously excluded. So if you carve out cyber, we actually went down just a small amount. So it's good news this year. Um, even though our property values continue to rise, um, severe weather still happens, um, but we're managed to keep our rates low. So any other questions, I'd be happy to take them. Yeah.
So, and this might be for Megan too. Megan, how did we go from thirty-nine point seven percent and twenty-five to three point eight percent? Walk me through that process.
The increase last year you're referring to, right? Um, I've chosen to like block twenty-twenty-four out of my memory for obvious reasons, but it is a fair question. Um, very candidly, you had a few things working against you. Not you as a city, you as an insured specifically in Iowa. We all felt it. Um, you had market conditions, hard market conditions. For anyone who really wants to go in the weeds, I'm happy to take you there, but I know uh as my husband says, no one wants to get there, but um you had hard market conditions, which means that uh coverage providers didn't want to provide coverage for public entities. Um, you had reinsurance rates that skyrocketed as a result. And then you had very poor loss experience for our state specifically, for anyone who has like delved into, you know, any coverage highlights. Iowa is affectionately known as the Florida of the Midwest. It's a, a real sad thing. We don't have palm trees, but last year I like to think, um, I don't like to think about it all, but if I have to think about it, I would say it was sort of a writing of the ship. And so we did have very, very steep rate increases on property. Um, that is not something we take like your city has been around almost since, since the inception of the program. Was anyone, is anyone familiar with what, you know, when pools were formed back in the seventies and eighties? Um, well, okay, well, pools were formed because there were hard market conditions at the time and public entities for obvious reasons are uh, you know, relatively scrutinized by in insurance companies. And so pools were formed as an alternative to traditional insurance. We still run that way um today. I like to think we're a little bit more nimble, a little bit more creative. We are certainly more tailored. Um, and so ICAP didn't raise its rates for the first thirty-five years of the program, um, which is it's, it's, it's not necessarily catch up now. It is, it is, yes, it is, but not catch up from that history. It is that there was sudden, you know, we say severity and frequency. There was a lot of volatility in the weather and because of urban sprawl, which I know you guys are familiar with as most of the metro communities and many other communities are. Um, those losses hit harder. When storms come in, there's a lot more damage. Frequency and severity cost have gone up, so every, everything that's damaged, the cost of that also goes up. And so there was a sort of almost like a reckoning last year, years of poor loss experience. And, you know, while ICAP is a pool, we do purchase reinsurance, we participate in a reinsurance pool, but then we purchase from the standard market. So we're at the mercy of whatever other reinsurer is seeing and experiencing as well.
Is any of that self-insured by ICAP? The alignment that slip you before you go to a reassurance?
Yes, we, so um, it, it's, it's relative on property and casualty, and so you're testing me. And I have a visual to cheat from, um, but there was some variation, but I think it's the first half million on property that ICAP self-insures. And then we participate in this reinsurance pool, which is a very, um, not all pools participate in reinsurance pool. So it's very creative and then they, so they sort of offer this layer of insulation before it hits the standard market. As I said, I do have a cheat sheet, which I'm happy to share with Matthew um for forwarding out to the group if you're interested. But once we go to standard market, it's some of the big names that you all know. So on our property insurance or reinsurance, for instance, we reinsure through Travelers. On the liability side, there's a couple of players, but Genesis and Great American are among them. So I don't know if that very specifically answered your question.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah.
And to add to that, you know, we're, we're standing in this beautiful new building um that was recently created. Um, just in the last four years, I think we've doubled our property values and our vehicle values have gone up about thirty-eight percent. So the value of what we are insuring has gone up a lot. Uh, you know, it's expensive to go buy a vehicle now compared to eight years ago. Quite a bit of difference.
Fire trucks.
Yeah, fire trucks for sure. Yes.
And yeah. And we like to ensure that those are valued appropriately, so we very much appreciate the efforts of this team. Um, but I would say too with that, you know, you asked about how do we go, I think you said from thirty to about five, your property rates this year are actually flat, which again, I do recognize, you know, you have this steep jump last year and then to go flat this year. But I really do think that that steep jump last year is painful as it was, and it was really painful. Um, it really positioned us well for this year and going forward. And so your property rates on both your autos and your, your, what we call PD, your, you know, your buildings, your structures, your contents, those rates are flat. Your increase on that line is, as Matthew was, I think, pointing out, it's exposure based. It just means that you've grown and so your rate has grown or your premium rather has grown relative to that.
Well said.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
What we're looking for is a motion to approve. Second. Motion second to approve the renewal. Further discussion. Seeing none with council please vote. And the great legion. Who was the second?
I was.
Yes. There is.
And that passes by a vote of five zero.
Uh, your honor, uh, tonight we have the um we're requesting a waiver of the rules, the council to consider the final consideration of proposed fireworks ordinances or amendments to the ordinances related to fireworks changes at the state level. Um, staff has been starting the communication uh with the public, both through the newsletter and on social media and online uh in terms of the council's desires uh related to uh city property uh prohibition, related to fireworks, and also uh Pete can speak to this, some of the best practices that we're encouraging our folks in terms of using fireworks safely if they choose to do so. So with that, your honor, we would uh recommend the final consideration to be compliance with state law and the city cities are being preemptive. Uh, in this particular situation, being required to allow fireworks being shot off uh in our community on July third, fourth, December thirty-first at circumscribed times that are included in referred to any ordinance.
Very good. I move that the rule requiring that an ordinance be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to this meeting be suspended with respect to ordinance number one-one-six-three. Do your second.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rule. Further discussion, seeing none with council please vote and with clerk please post that. And the rules are suspended by a vote of five zero. Move that ordinance number one-one-six-three be considered upon its passage and adopted.
Second.
Further discussion, seeing none with council please vote and with clerk please post that. That passes by a vote of five zero, ordinance number one-one-six-three is declared to have been enacted. Next up, we have Pete telling us about water.
I'm only a guy, I'll share my state. Thank you, Mayor Council. This evening, we are looking for some discussion and ultimate direction from the council about a very important decision about live water future. If you know, uh, we are now members of Central Iowa Water Works, this memo is the same one that was in your package. Central Iowa Water Works was formed in part to come up with regional solutions for water production, which in turn can set member communities up for a more stable future with rates that are paid for by businesses and residents. As Clive evaluated that opportunity, council had decided that yep, this was gonna be a good fit. So now we're stepping into some of the really first really important step actions that will be taken by Central Iowa Water Works. We need to expand capacity uh throughout the CIWW network and the city of Clive also needs to expand its purchase capacity in anticipation of a build-out population of about twenty-two thousand people. Now, that's our best estimate right now. We think uh based on the sort of the logic that we've gone through with some of the consultants at CIWW and with talking with Doug and his team, that that's roughly about a decade into our future that we reach that type of a population number. Interestingly, that's also the point at which we can start to potentially cross over from what we would need, sort of following this yellow line here, our daily demand and where our purchase capacity would be after the Saylorville expansion. So the Saylorville expansion was already sort of in the works with CIWW came on board and there was an agreement set up to determine who would be received, what part of that capacity and Clive is going to receive some portion of it. The question that we have to ask next then is how much more of the next capacity to come online should Clive request? Doesn't guarantee we get it and it's still not completely uh cooked, the sort of process by which allocations will the allocated amount will be uh sent to different requesting communities. What we do tend to uh tend to believe, uh, based on direction from CIWW is that with this next round of capacity that's coming up, or it will be oversubscribed. Because many communities that are growing will say, wow, it'd be much less expensive to buy this capacity than some future plant that's even further out into the future. So uh, let me pause there for a second just to see if there are any questions sort of about these underlying facts about the situation. Okay.
I have one. Um, roughly with your cursor, where would have our capacity been prior to joining this organization on that line there?
Six point nine eight, just barely below seven.
So it would have been up here.
So we're now at for something that we had. We're not getting, we can get what we need.
There, I wouldn't say you're not guaranteed. Um, there is a provision in the CIWW twenty-eighty that requires CIWW to provide production demand of its members. Now, how fast that happens is a question. What I would say is in terms of uh what we had before was well, well in excess, as you're seeing today of what we needed and we got substantial value for selling that back. We didn't have a choice to say at the time as part of those negotiations, we only want to sell back a certain amount that wasn't on the table uh as a part of those negotiations. So, yes, there is a provision where we're, we're buying some capacity back, but at a much smaller amount than the over three, almost uh two and a half that we basically sold back and got valued for as a part of joining CIWW. So for example,
I, I get a lot of questions to come though, whether the decision's made on whether we're granted water or not for our build-out. You know, it's, you say, and the devil's in the detail and words matter, right? It's we're not guaranteed, as Pete says, but we're told we will get each city will get what they need for their population, but not guaranteed on when they'll get it. Is an interesting throttle of a city's growth by water, right? Because you can't grow unless you have the capacity. And if we're at eighteen, nineteen thousand today headed for twenty-two and then eight years, you're at maximum and they say you're there. Us or any other city now have to stop growing and not ask for any more burnt businesses or commercial or to even revamp a redevelopment that has more water intensive use of facility or house or commercial. Is the fear we won't have the water to do it?
It's not quite that. It's not the volume of water needed may not be available. It's that if we exceed our purchase capacity for three, for, for more than three days in a calendar year, then we have financial penalties. So that's a different, so it's not the limit of the water per se that would prevent us. It is the hammer, the threat of this kind of that is financial penalty.
Which could be worse than not having the water because the, that financial could add up to a point that your property taxes or any other growth don't help the hammer, right? Offsets the hammer of what's coming down financially, uh, said that.
Right.
It, it, it's not something to hatch out today, but I think definitely has to be on strategic planning of this discussion, right?
Yes.
Of and maybe the horse is out of the barn, it's too late. But that, that, this is the first time I've really realized this, that makes me a bit nervous.
Would, but I would say to that where I'm not as nervous, uh, Councilmember McCoy is the CIWW knew coming into this because it took us a few extra years, year or two longer to form, they were behind on adding production, of course, that's been a big conversation right now uh related to uh some of the nitrate concerns and us having to throttle back lawn water and you're paying a lot of lawn uh watering at the moment. And, but there, there was plans and uh the Saylorville expansion, which is underway, is a part of that right now with the goal of expanding up to another fifteen MGD in the next seven years, which is in our seven-year window. If um, what I would expect is at minimum, Clive is gonna get our percentage of that MGD that is our, you know, how much use we are in the system, which is roughly three percent. If we get roughly three percent of that fifteen MGD, we hit our number. So I have some comfort in that. I'm not as concerned. Um, now I'm concerned about just the ability, yes, we might build fifteen MGD and there's other factors at play just generally for the whole region of whether or not we can, you know, produce water at that level. Of course, what we're seeing today with blur plan and the restrictions on nitrates. But at least the new production that we're adding are all um for uh treatment processes that remove nitrates, reverse osmosis, and then well with the grimes expansion. So that also gives me comfort as the new production that we're adding is hopefully helping protect our future uh when it comes to water production. But Clive is in a much more advantageous position because of how all this played out. We were probably the, the, the most advantageous uh out of all the CIWW members because we had an asset back, got the value for that. Our buy-in was virtually not zero, but much, much smaller than the other communities that had to buy in for a lot more. Um, uh, in the millions of dollars where we're, you know, fair, you know, four to six hundred thousand dollars. Um, we, we're, we're seeing the value of that today in our rate structure um that we're benefiting from. And yes, we have us a little bit to probably buy back for our, for build-out capacity. But what I think is really important about all this conversation is this group, uh us as a, a city also have some choices to help um regulate what that demand is from a policy perspective. But knowing that you want to have some level of capacity, knowing that we still have a little bit of growth yet and to give yourself, give us cushion. But then you have policy choices, which people get into, that be another cushion. Uh, because what we're really talking about with that number is peak day demand. So average day, two, two and a half million. We're fine, you know, with that, of course, right now, and we have peak demand in terms of being a high irrigating community while we're under normal conditions. That's where, for example, we hit four point two of MGD last July for one day. So that is what we're talking about, but I know this council has talked quite a bit about wanting to manage and consider uh how can we look at irrigation differently? You all implemented a tier rate structure when it came to irrigation to start setting the stage for is this the way we want to spend that resource? And if those folks, folks that want to irrigate at a high level, they're gonna definitely pay for it. And so whether that, you know, we haven't really seen the disincentive of that today. Um, but of course, we have very limited data, which would only be in one year. Um, so far, a little over a year since that's been implemented, or we're actually at the year mark, that that's been implemented. And so that'll be something that the council can decide regardless of Central Iowa Water Works or in coordination thereof, which we'll talk about that is being discussed, which I'm very optimistic about. That was a long answer to your question. There's a lot of pieces to that, but I wanted to make sure um in context that that's important. That was a long answer to your question. There's a lot of pieces to that, but I wanted to make sure in context that that's important.
Can you?
No, I cannot. It's beyond the recording.
So the one, before we leave this slide, the the good news, fortuitous timing, right? You're a central out of waterworks, Clive's a member, they're planning now thinking about about conservatively, seven years, they're going to bring on this extra fifteen MGD. You'll hear him talk about that kind of collectively, but also separately as the West Plant and the Grimes Expansion. But that's seven year window. Matches up well with our current sort of growth path. So that until we have a chance to bring that capacity online. It looks like we're still going to be in good shape. And then when the capacity does come online, then we have a chance to get what additional we will need. Hopefully to take us to a level that will accommodate our complete build out. Now, all the numbers are variable. Can't perfectly predict, we could, we could get enormously more dense and be more than twenty two thousand people as a community at that point. We may be still sitting a little bit less than that in that in that point. So we're doing our best to see down the path as far as we can right now. So let's talk about the choices that are in front of us and I've done, again, this is math that's based on very early projections on cost. How much would it cost for us potentially to get the additional capacity? Well, first off, right now, we think that getting to five MGD will be a good number to accommodate a twenty two thousand person population. If we can get that from the Grimes, from the Grimes and West Plant expansions, there are two different kind of costs to be aware of. One is the cost that everybody has to share, participate in. So this nine percent of that total cost for these two is paid for by all member agencies per the twenty eighty agreement. And then of that nine percent, Clive right now represents gets about about three point one three percent of the nine percent number. So we're on the hook for this amount regarding the additional capacity we choose to buy. Then if we extrapolate sort of that. There will be some distribution of this other big number here, hundred seventy seven million. Remained for the portion that will be paid for most likely by all of the people who are requesting that excess capacity. However, there are provisions in the twenty eighty that Central Iowa Water Works for their own business operations purposes. May elect to buy some of that new capacity as well. So these are the things that still need to sort of be worked out. If we were to get it, I did the math and I came up with an estimate that the total cost to find, if we were to get the additional point four to point five. MGDs from the new capacity would be somewhere in the neighborhood of five point eight, five point nine.
Please back up one minute, second. On the CIW doing fine. Their own capacity. For what purpose?
We did, I I think I read that correctly, it's for their business operations needs. Jeff, didn't I read that actually accurately too that? The CIWW entity itself has the ability within its. Within all the capacity of network to allocate some sort of to itself. Or am I mistaken on that?
Now. Toilet and stuff.
I don't think, now there is a requirement, and this is on all of us, that a portion of that. Capacity that we all have, we have to have a buffer component. A buffer capacity component, the number we're giving you is the total of everything, but. There is some of the larger end of these, like a Des Moines Water Works, for example. Might say in this process that they don't want any additional capacity. Or they might not want their percentage, their full percentage portion of what they are like worth of three percent, they're a much higher number. So that's what's playing out right here with this next fifteen MGD. Everybody, so the the ten MGD that we're currently constructing at Saylorville to expand that plant, everybody asked for their full allocation. So we would have loved to have gotten more out of that one because that plant was cheaper. That ten MGD, not a lot cheaper, but cheaper. Than what you see here when you look at cost for MGD per million gallons per day. And but everybody wanted their allocation of that ten MGD, and so that's how we got the little bump up that Pete showed. In the beginning of his memo. And so what's really playing out here is everybody going to ask for their full allocation. You might have slower growing communities or like a Des Moines Water Works that might not ask for all of it. So then that gets distributed to the other members. So the growth communities I fully expect will ask for their 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 percentage portion. But what's interesting about all this too is there is a few compute communities that might be operating already in their buffer capacity. Which is that fifteen percent that maybe they, you know, this is a policy decision for the CIWW board. Will they get priority of this new allocation if you're running in that buffer capacity? So that those are still some open questions. And that's why what we're talking about tonight is a preliminary number. This isn't, we're locked into it.
Yeah.
It is for them for planning purposes of this next fifteen MGD. Is how can the board then start to have some of these policy conversations of how it's equitably allocated?
And I'll double check on that part of the part of the data I read on that because I don't want to leave people with that one. The last thing I'd like to run past the council has to do not with. How do we get the capacity number that we need? It would be appropriate flex in there, appropriate amount of buffer space too. But then also, how do we manage those days when we are potentially peaking past that purchase capacity threshold? Because I think there's a lot we can do to use to irrigate lawns smarter than the way we are doing it today. Again, we double, we double the amount of water that we use in on a typical day. At those high watering days, which is well up to over four million gallons per day.
We will be able to see a long term impact yet as far as a data survey of the effects of SQR. I know we're still relatively early in the process, five years or whatever it is, but we're going to see what type of impact that will.
So when we did do that over the first three years of the program, and we'll look at our spots again. We ended up seeing a sort of a mixed bag. On one hand, it appeared that the decompaction work, so the aerating work was having a pretty good persistent effect. But we didn't see though with was the effect we thought we'd get from the increased organic matter. The organic matter also contributes to the ability of a lot to catch it and produce. Because of drought conditions one year, because of other conditions, maybe some unique practices somebody did on their yard. We actually didn't see the increase in organic content that we thought we were going to see for the yards that had done the SQR. So maybe the previous year or the year before that. Could be that it just sort of wears out. The good news though is that it did stay less compacted. And we think that has a benefit on the water being into the lot and then if it's healthy grass, healthy turf. It'd be able to to use it, but I can't put an exact number to what it needs or total watering.
I saw the program's growing too, so we'll continue to see positive effects on that.
Councilmember, I think one interesting point that you bring up that we could, we could go back to is we have the contact information for most of these folks is. Just anecdotally, have they changed their lawn watering habits? Or maybe frequency? If they are lawn waterers, did they go from three days to two days? Because they did the SQR program again, I know it's anecdotal and it won't be hardly scientific. But I think that could at least be a survey. That we could do to see, now again, I get it, right? They might have had a drought here right before they did SQR and then there was a wet year right after and of course, yeah, of course I didn't water as much. But I think they would give a pretty good read of I don't schedule it as much as I used to. And hopefully that that's a big part of why we're doing this program is hopefully getting healthier lawns that don't require the additional watering.
And also do better at catching stormwater infiltrating.
Right, being a sponge for that water when it does fall, or for the less, you know, irrigated water needs to happen.
So managing our peaks, that is a hundred percent a discussion about managing lawn watering. Not just, I mean, I want to be very specific about that too. It's not about those other types of outdoor uses like filling up the pool or watering your trees or your garden. This is about the automated systems that are working zones around the lawn specifically to water the turf. So I think that that's a really important topic we may want to come bring to you in strategic planning. I can tell you that Central Iowa Water Works right now has got a subcommittee on water uses, water, water conservation and best practices. And our group is laser focused right now on first and foremost, let's understand how turf watering is doing, happening right now. And how we might be able to do it more efficiently in the future. Now, CIWW can't go and dictate that member communities adopt those practices. But setting that aside. Clive, as we look at that graphic and we know because we're a heavy irrigation community. That getting a good handle on that is just going to be essential to our future. And to achieve the sort of water competence, Councilmember McCoy, that you were describing for our future. So we don't get throttled, right? By the perception of lack of resources or a sense of a financial penalty that might be out there. Or higher rates that make us less attractive potentially is another piece. But I think it's possible to do both. We've got really interesting early research we've done about soil, soil moisture monitors. And how those can can better communicate with irrigation systems. Another really great example, a pretty simple practice. When the lawn watering ban went into effect, there was one company that manages a lot of systems on residential properties. They give them sort of a soup to nut service where not only they come and turn it on and off, but then they'll also manage it for them through the season. Which then gives them the ability when this bandwidth effect to communicate directly to their customers and say, hey. Because it's in effect, we're going to go ahead and take care of it for you and go ahead and turn it on. So then it's not us, the city necessarily having to go in and hold those types of keys. That can be a little uncomfortable for everybody. But if you elect to work with a company like this that has that service, maybe there's a chance for us to communicate with them about why. How that ended up being beneficial when the community needed to take swift action. So I think there's a lot of ways that we can deep the water, use water wisely, how we can irrigate more wisely than we are today.
Pete, can you remind me, what's the, to get to the five MGD, what's the added cost? To get there?
Right now, we're estimating that would be between five point eight and five point nine million.
Okay.
So I know we're not making a decision tonight, but I can tell you. I have a real hard time with the vast majority of the residents. Having to subsidize the few that irrigate their lawns for to the tune of six million dollars. That I I have a real problem with that. So I mean, I think there's ways that we can structure the irrigation tiers. That they're paying for that on an ongoing basis, as used basis. I don't think the vast majority of the residents need to be paying for another irrigation.
Good point. I mean, that's part of part of those policy considerations, right? Where there's levers and tools that if that is, you know, again, the what the council wants to see. That we can start looking at, because I would agree, right? That's added. And also you need to have the infrastructure system in place to be able to carry that much water and it's for. Irrigating and I think this is that broad conversation that Central Iowa Water Works, as Pete mentioned, is wrestling with is. The twenty to twenty five year, if I remember correctly, CIP is one point two billion. Dollars of water production. This is just two hundred million of this fifteen MGD that you're seeing here. There's still a lot more coming down the lines. And the vast majority of that is to handle expanded irrigation. As we grow, based on our, how the levels that we irrigate today. So I think this is a Clive question, this is a huge region question of, and it's a simple, I I think what. Where this could be really effective is just to the math of that financial number I just gave you is. Is there a better way to spend that one point two billion or a portion of that one two point two billion? That isn't on a production facility, but maybe might be some of these other tools. To go to the source of how we can be more efficient in irrigation versus building more treatment. We know we need to build more treatment regardless for a growing region. But do we need to build as much new capacity if it's mostly for irrigation? This is an open policy question. A region needs to deal with and because that's going to give reflected in the rates. Now, the one advantage that we have as a part of Central Iowa, CIWW versus what we had before. Under the relationship with Des Moines Water Works. Is we would be obligated to bond for this, these, these dollars. It is now incorporated into the rate structure, the wholesale rate structure. So that's a benefit to us in terms of, I mean, to carry that debt, CIWW is carrying that debt, but it's reflected in our rate structure, but. And this is definitely something I know we've mentioned here just this last year, it'll be in strategic planning. Then the CIWW wholesale rate structure to us now has a fixed and a variable component. That fixed component is the debt, is the capital investment cost and the variable. Under the Des Moines Water Works relationship, that was one hundred percent variable. And Des Moines Water Works carried that liability of the infrastructure and the capital cost on their books. And that's why we had a completely, we do today still, a complete variable rate just for the regular water and the irrigated water. We need to reevaluate that now that we're getting a different kind of cost from CIWW where a portion of that is. Fixed capital and a portion's variable, our own rate structure is both on the irrigation side and. The regular water rate should reflect that because there's a risk for us. For again, a very, very wet year. Where we're not selling or you're here right now where we're not selling any irrigation, right? Because of the ban, there's a financial liability where we're not, you know, where we have a fixed cost coming at us that we don't have water sales to. To balance against it, so there's a risk for us in the future. But I think there's an advantage though, because those that debt is incorporated into the rates versus us having to go to the market like we did. For our purchase capacity that we had in two thousand eight. Which was a huge, which is a debt that we carried on our water utility versus CIWW carrying that debt.
Okay, so this will be a topic that we come back to with frequency. Good, so there's, we'll be busy very quickly here getting into finish up the Saylorville plant. Getting that capacity added and then getting into discussions at CIWW about. Launching the construction design of both the West Plant and the Grimes Expansion. In fact, the executive committee took action earlier this week specifically to. Begin the bonding process for work on those projects.
And I think the engineering contracts to design.
Yeah.
Right?
That's correct. They selected their preferred designer. Okay.
Any other question?
Go ahead.
I'd like to bring up a tangential issue if you're done, Pete. It's not specific to this, but it's water related. I've had a few residents reach out to me about their backflows. And the cost they have, that they absorb for dewinterizing their backflows. And we've now basically mandated the non-use of their irrigation system. Some residents think that they should be fully or partially refunded their. Their fees for having to dewinterize their backflows. And I'm not taking a position one way or the other, I'm just bringing it up as something that I've heard from multiple residents. Cost to dewinterize kind of varies between a hundred and two hundred dollars each spring. To do that and now the complaint is, oh, I don't even get to use my irrigation system. So what's the city going to do about it? So I'm just curious as to what others think of that position.
Well. Matt, you know, I have been discussing this a little too, it's it's an interesting question. As he and I were sort of weighing the logic of the argument. One thing that struck me is that anytime you're choosing to take on a certain practice or sort of home maintenance practice. You're going to do it within the context of sort of the ordinance of the city of Clive. But you're also electing to do that, knowing that there are also going to be some risks about how your system works. Maybe you have a giant blowout and then you get charged for all that water that you had that blew out into the street. Any number of things like that and I don't know if I could get behind the concept that. Because they chose that risk and they have a loss now or something with sideways form. That those taxpayers should then somehow mitigate that risk for that. That was a choice that they made, like the choice to irrigate it all and take on that expense and maintain your lawn the way that you want to. So that's.
And and I don't disagree, the 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 count, the playing devil's advocate, the counter argument is that the city is. As, I don't know how long ago it was, Doug, started mandating this backflow test. That didn't exist prior to that, I don't know, seven years, eight years, I'm not sure how long it's been.
It's been a while.
Hasn't been that long, I I can't remember. But and and so that's a city mandated cost that they otherwise would not have to achieve.
And.
It's interesting about that, you know, to, that's where we were, I think about what you just said a minute ago too, about concerns about subsidizing irrigators.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily agreeing with the argument.
I know, I know. I'm just, I'm just talking out loud.
Yeah.
That. So for example, if we were to reimburse folks for that expense, it would come from the water utility, right? And so then you would have. And so then you would have all the rate payers in the city. Subsidizing irrigators for their de-winterization costs. Now, what I would say is. They've, you know, benefited from an irrigation system up to prior to the ban. Ban is going to go away at some point. Um, likely, hopefully soon, we're all hoping for soon, right? Um, and it'll be probably during the balance of the season of the summer when you have the most irrigation, right? Later. Towards the middle, the tail end of the summer. But I think they're going to get plenty of value out of turning their system on. Uh, and the backflow preventers of protection for our water distribution network. Um, like most cities have. So anyway, I'm just, it was kind of interesting of, it would, you'd be subsidizing irrigators to another level.
Agreed. I'm just curious what others thought of that.
I, I'll be in line with, I, I'd like to see how this played out because in, in history, uh. The city didn't allow uh, burn pits, right? Uh, fireplaces open. And now we do. I bought one and it was a burn ban and I took my credit for those sixty days. For that burn thing that was. It has a cap on it that I can hook on.
The plumbing code is now a state law.
Is it?
You know, that we have to follow. So back when these backflow prevent, I think it was part of the state requirement. To have backflow prevention in all communities that hook to a public source of water.
So that's good to know. So the backflow tests that we require the winterization and de-winterization, that's all state. Oh, that's good to know.
What year was that, Ryan? Do you remember?
I don't off the top of my head.
Two thousands, nineties?
No, it's fairly recent.
I remember when we instituted it.
Yeah, it's probably five or six years. I mean, it's, it's not that long ago that plumbing code um, was mandated for that.
That's why, just again, the kind of level said. The backflow prevention requirement has been in place for decades. What changed was it was a very laborious process. To annually get every property owner to have their backflow tested. And submit the documentation to the city. That was a nightmare. We went to a different system and process in which, in essence, contractors. Then became the obligating authority to document that they've been tested and are proper. That's really when kind of the extra cost came into be. But the obligation to annually ensure that that backflow is working properly. Has been on the books for a very, very long time.
Okay, that's good information. I appreciate it.
Any other water questions?
We've got a correction.
Well. Pete will move in reports and keep that for us.
This has been a busy, busy storytelling uh, season for Clive. Uh, yesterday I was on television a couple of different times talking about not just a response to the small flooding event that we saw. But more broadly about plan that Clive has in place. Uh, I think that was a real positive story. Um, some of the stories we're going to have moving forward are going to. Be potentially challenging fireworks are the top of the list. We know that this is something that. It's got, uh, residents and businesses have very different opinions on whether they should or shouldn't. And then what does it mean to do it in a respectful way or in a disrespectful way? Again, our core message is if you're going to do it, do it safely and do it respectfully at the right place and the right time. The do it safely is at the top of the list. And. Next week, we're going to be working with Chief Garcia. We've already started putting some assets together. Uh, but we're going to work with Chief Garcia to go back to our story a couple of years ago when a firework that was lit and used, but then thrown in a garbage can. Ended up creating a fire there at the cell, at the, at the tent where they were selling it and led to the container fire explosion. That could have been significantly more dangerous to the neighborhood. Uh, it was very, very dangerous to our first responders. That was caused because somebody did not dispose of a firework the right way. So you'll hear us really hammering on that message of do it safely and especially when you dispose of them. Take any spent or unspent fireworks and soak them in a tub of water. So that'll be part of our core messages for. This coming week, we know that a lot of folks have already started to use them. It's outside the window when you should. And so part of our messaging uh, is also about how do people report it if they choose to do so. Uh, with the knowledge though, that this is very, very difficult for enforcement for our police department.
Anything else, Pete?
No, you're not.
Very good. Any correspondence?
Actually, yeah, I do have one. It's a good one though. It's a really good one. Oh, um, it didn't come in in time to make it into the packet, uh, but I'll go ahead and pass it out. It is a letter from former Mayor Scott Sircena. Regarding Sircena Park and his gratitude. Um, he also mentions the Parks Department for their handbook as well. So I'll get a copy of that to Richard as well. Um, other than that, there are no other correspondence.
Well, it's not often you have good news.
Like the Grim Reaper.
I, I wasn't reading quite that.
Uh, just uh, two things, just a reminder, uh, the Lanan Park ribbon cutting on Tuesday at three o'clock. Uh, just a reminder there to park at the Harlock Center. We're going to be doing it around the. Um, the Futsal Court or the old uh, Futsal Court location. So park on that side. The construction fencing has already gone up. Uh, around the site. So we're excited to have that and figure cross forecast wise, looks like some decent weather on Tuesday afternoon. So we're excited to see you all there. Um, and lastly, I just wanted to mention there. As I shared with the, the council yesterday of uh, you know, having a flood, having a water main break and then having a train derailment. Um, I think over, especially and also with uh, what the utility billing folks have done an amazing job with getting. Uh, compliance with the watering, the lawn watering ban and the amazing job they've done with that. I think. Over the last couple of weeks, I've been reflecting on how uh, a lot of uh, curveballs have been thrown your staffs away and it's just been remarkable. See their resilience in the face of a lot of, a lot of things happening at the same time. Uh, over the last couple of weeks and just been really proud of that, um, to see that from the, the staff team and uh. Was feeling that a little bit yesterday, but for the work and hopefully we'll get Swanson reopened tomorrow. After they fix the track from the, the derailment, uh, but your water main break got repaired this morning. The guys were working overnight. Um, on that one. And of course, um, just kind of of, of, even though it didn't end up being much uh, yesterday morning in terms of uh. Flooding along Walnut Creek, but it was a good reminder and a good reminder for staff too in terms of just. Exercise, you know, we do the tabletop training every spring, but it doesn't hurt to exercise the muscle. Uh, in a real live event and I'm happy to say that the rainfall this evening was much less. So I do not see any concerns here over the next couple of days. So, so I'll have your number.
I had one, another thing there too, uh, specifically on the watering ban. The numbers are unjust striking. About how well Clive residents and businesses did taking swift action when they needed to. And they deserve tons of, tons of credit for their contribution to this regional sort of resilience. Um, the, the, on the Saturday after the ban went into effect, we were using one point nine three three million gallons going through irrigation meters. That number now has plummeted and we've sustained it over now almost a two week period, maybe two weeks this coming Saturday. Over those two weeks now, we've been able to average somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty to a hundred sixty-five thousand gallons going through irrigation meters. With less than five of sort of real, really naughty list actors who have decided to.
There's two on my list and, and, and that has actually um, defined users to the point. Where they frankly, frankly have been rude to our staff. Um, and uh, I intend to use. Uh, the tools that are allowed in our ordinance to. Down, express how I feel, how we feel about them continuing to irrigate and then also. Treating our folks the way they have, so.
But that's not the headline. The headline is the people that the right that.
Two, probably two.
And then we have.
Twenty-nine hundred meters.
Yeah, irrigation meters, irrigation. So, so it's a great credit to the people of Clive for doing.
Are you going to be putting anything out in the newsletter on that?
I think we should, the, the way that uh, Central Iowa Water Works has been handling it, they don't want to sort of single signal. Spike the football, declare victory because we're still in the middle of it and walking back from this point is going to be stunning stages as well, but. We've been as a city, I've been sharing that exact set of stats with reporters when they ask about it, thanking residents for what they've done. And then emphasizing that we still have a ways to go. So let's keep going there together.
I would think that kind of an update could be articulated in the newsletter of, hey, we're not through it. But thank you to the residents for doing an amazing job.
Yeah.
You know, and, and just some sort of update because I think people, people deserve an update.
Of course, of course. So I think the way that that'll work out, um, because I do think they're going to start this, some sort of a slow walk. I don't know exactly the shape of it, but things are improving. Um, I expect that, well, our opportunity to do it will be this month. As we go into Ju- June, gotta get July, we gotta get past some of the other firework stories and other things are coming. But then it will be the August newsletter when we're ready to really use that vehicle. But even before we get there. I think there'll be a window of opportunity in July where we can uh, reflect back on some of the successes.
When people, when people see that collective effort and, and the positive impacts that it made, you know. Look, we all understand that was, that was difficult to, to, to do a lot of these restricting the irrigation, but. And it's a collective effort with positive results and it's, you know, it's a good message.
Mother nature's cooperative too. Sometimes they. It's all happy.
Very good. Anything legal?
No report, Your Honor.
Mike?
No report.
Susan?
I appreciated seeing council members McCoy and fine and the ribbon cutting for tasty tacos. If anybody hasn't been there yet, it's definitely was going to. Um, and then I'd just like to emphasize what we were talking about before the meeting and the. Coverage that has happened in Capitol Dispatch regarding the Polk County Water. That was commissioned several years ago. The county has been sitting on it for a while. I talked with. Our representative for Clive Supervisor McCoy asking. When they were going to release that because I think it's important for people to be able to understand. What we're dealing with. And he said it would be, but he was reluctant to have an impact. And a couple of other things like that. But it is coming out now and there'll be a conversation about it after. Uh, Board Supervisors maybe on Tuesday. So. I encourage you to read that report and then you'll want to read, to read the coverage and then read the reports.
And where's everything?
On the Iowa Capitol Dispatch. It's written in article Jared Sprom.
That article does include a readable version of the full summary, summary report, not the. It's about a hundred pages. The larger complete report is. The additional a hundred pages after that too. So I think right now it's just that hundred page summary that's available.
It's a hundred page summary?
Yeah.
A hundred page report and the summary is a hundred.
I might be wrong on my numbers. It's, it's a read.
All right, great.
A couple of things, Mayor attended uh, Clive Chamber, uh, granted Des Moines Partnership uh, function they had out at, at Principal Park. Also catch Des Moines Executive Board meeting. That was Greg Edwards' last meeting. So uh. Certainly wish Greg all the best, the great job he's done. There will be, uh, Greg will have a retirement party coming up, but I'll make sure everybody gets invitations to coming up in July. So. That's it, Mayor.
Thanks, Eric.
Ted?
Uh, attended M P O this afternoon. Um. Light agenda, but uh, the one thing that impacted us was that the uh, Safe Streets for All grant was submitted today. Um, that we were briefed on previously and um, the hope is that we'll get a, we'll get some news on that by the end of the year.
That's it. Very good.
Councilor report, yeah.
Anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none. We'll adjourn at seven forty-four.